We'll give our members of the Fire Department a minute to get in here. Guys, there's plenty of room in here. You guys feel free to work your ways in. Go ahead and have seats up here if you want. Not as bad as church where you're in the back. Alrighty, I'll be standing back there in the command. Alright, good evening folks. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Would you like to stand for the prayer and pledge for Councilmember Paulus?
Lord, I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give the council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the items before them. May every decision be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory, Lord. Please protect and watch over our military firefighters and police officers in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Paulus. Madam clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Paulus.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Councilmember Kraft.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Davidson.
Here.
Councilmember Brill. Councilmember Bessel.
Here.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Are there any agenda modifications for tonight's meeting other than? No additions. We'll have them stand as read. Executive session request?
No requests, Mr. Mayor.
Might have something to do with this football game starting a little bit. Alright, we have some special presentations. Mr. Kathman would like to start this one out.
Could we have Nancy Lane? She's not happy with me bringing her up here. So I just wanted to take a moment in front of all the audience here to recognize Nancy Lane, who's the treasurer of the Fairfield City School District on the occasion of her retirement. The city and the school districts, as everyone knows, has had a long, a strong relationship. It's vitally important to each other and the overall Fairfield community. And we have a lot of school representatives here in the audience today. Could you raise your hand if you're with the school district? Now, we've got a bunch of folks here. And both organizations have worked together in so many ways over the years. One way in particular that Nancy and I have worked together for over nineteen years now, a long time, is with the consideration of economic development proposals. In her role as treasurer, she's been our primary contact with the district on evaluating these proposals. You know, Nancy's always been a consummate professional when we've been evaluating our proposals. She advocates diligently, and let me tell you, she's very diligent about advocating on behalf of the district and its needs. But she and the rest of the school community and the board, I think they recognize that the overall community benefits that accrue. When we have a strong economic development program, a thriving local economy benefits both the school district and the city. So I know Nancy recognizes this. She's been a great partner over the years. So I wanted to thank her publicly for all of her assistance over the years. And I think the mayor has a special few comments here.
We got something for you too. How about that? Well, I was just gonna comment. School funding is extremely complicated. And I'm certain that you're probably the only one in this whole room that understands it. There's only a few others. I don't even think Billy back there knows that stuff. So, you know, it is unbelievably complicated because whenever I have a school finance issue or something, we come up and they explain it, you just go, huh, okay. So what you've done in all the years has just been tremendous for our community. So I'd like to read this proclamation to you. From the office of the mayor, proclamation. Whereas the city of Fairfield is pleased to recognize Nancy Lane on the occasion of her retirement. And whereas Ms. Lane started with the Fairfield City School District as a payroll supervisor in June of 1996, and was named treasurer in January of 2005, achieving a more than nineteen-year tenure serving as treasurer for the city schools. Whereas Mrs. Lane was instrumental in bond, I'm sorry, hang on here. Bonding and construction of the new Fairfield freshman school, Central Elementary School, Compass Elementary School, all within the city of Fairfield. And whereas Mrs. Lane's leadership and financial management has extended the utility of the 2011 operating levy originally intended to last five years to still supporting student programming today. Mrs. Lane has been a valued partner in the city of Fairfield's economic development efforts, as Mr. Kathman said, ensuring new job creation tax bases, tax base that enables the community to provide high-quality services to the city and the schools. Whereas it is only fitting that the city of Fairfield recognized Ms. Lane in the following manner. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Rotis, mayor of the city of Fairfield, Ohio, do hereby proclaim Monday, September thirtieth, 2024, Treasurer Nancy Lane Day in the city of Fairfield, Ohio.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
She is so, she's gonna be upset. Next, we have some Fire Department announcements.
First off, we have a promotion. We're gonna promote Kyle Shower to fire apparatus operator. Kyle started with the Fire Department part-time in 2008 and then in 2017 went full-time. And after an unexpected resignation, we are honored to be able to promote Kyle to fire apparatus operator. Pending his badge today will be his wife, Ashley. And standing with him will be his children, Addie and Knox.
Alright guys, we're gonna read something here that your dad gets to read. I'm sorry, left it behind me here. Alright, you wanna help him with this one? You can probably help him with this. Alright, sir, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'll state your name.
Aye.
As firefighter apparatus operator for the city of Fairfield, Ohio, swear to continually demonstrate professionalism, competence, respect, and loyalty in the performance of my duties to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity and to serve the citizens of Fairfield with compassion, courage, and integrity. And to uphold the laws and the constitutions of the United States of America, state of Ohio, city of Fairfield, Ohio. So help me God. How about that? Hang on there, I'm gonna get somebody to take a picture. She is. Why don't you stage that one more time? There you go. Now you can get a big hit, right in the chest. Cool. How about that? This guy's into this. Look at that smile. Holy cow.
Okay, anybody else with them?
Oh yeah, Chiefs, come in. Cool.
Tonight, we are also going to swear in a new firefighter. Luis Vallejo Garcia started with us part-time in 2022 and has been an incredible addition to the Fire Department family. And we are so grateful to be welcoming him into the family tonight.
Just recently, we had a proclamation in activities at the Village Green Center. Village Green, I'm sorry, the amphitheater, and Luis helped me translate and, right? That's right. And it was great because as I was reading, he was keeping up. And then, of course, he read the proclamation. I had no idea what he was saying, but I'm sure you didn't make fun of the mayor at that point, no. Alrighty, and here's your, what, there you go. So I'm gonna have you just raise your right hand. Alright, and repeat after me. I and state your name. As a firefighter for the city of Fairfield, Ohio, swear to continually demonstrate professionalism, competence, respect, and loyalty in the performance of my duties to serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity and to serve the citizens of Fairfield with compassion, courage, and integrity. And to uphold the laws and the constitutions of the United States of America, state of Ohio, city of Fairfield, Ohio. So help me God. Now, there you go, sir. Alright. We'll take a second here as I reorganize for citizens' comments. These guys do have trucks and apparatuses out there to get to and get back into position. Thanks for their fellow firemen for coming out and supporting the big family. Alright, at this time, we open the floor to citizen comments. So anybody at this time is welcome to come up. There is a five limit, five-minute limit. That's basically directed at a couple of you in that back row back there in case you were gonna talk. And state your name and address and you're welcome to the mic. Anybody? Alrighty. And council reports down here.
Mr. Mayor, yes, got a couple of things here. First of all, the next addition to the Fairfield flyer should arrive in the mailboxes the second week of October. So make sure you look at that. It's always packed with lots of information. Fire Prevention Week, speaking of Fire Prevention Week, is October sixth through twelfth of this year. The theme is smoke alarms. Make them work for you. Change those batteries during fall and spring times. And then finally, Fairfield's annual discard day, which is scheduled for Saturday, October nineteenth, from nine to noon in the parking lot of the Aquatic Center. Residents can bring discarded, recycled, or donate. The city has partnered with Junk King Habitat for Humanity, Restore Goodwill, Butler County Recycling, and Solid Waste, and Matthew Ministries. So check the city website. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This way, Mr. Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make an announcement to celebrate both Public Works and Public Utilities Departments, which have been recommended for reaccreditation by the American Public Works Association for another four-year period. Public Works is being accredited for the sixth time and was originally accredited in 2004. Public Utilities is being accredited for the fourth time and was originally accredited in 2012. Accreditation shows a dedication to continuous improvement and excellence. And Public Works employee Nick Castellini should be recognized for his diligence and hard work as the APWA accreditation manager for the city of Fairfield. Congratulations to both departments.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of items. Motorists are advised that Gray Road will be closed for ninety days, starting on Monday, October the seventh, 2024, between Lake Michigan Drive and West Augusta Boulevard. This closure is needed while work line, water line work is performed. The water system project will replace seven thousand feet of old and failing cast iron water main under Gray Road and will significantly improve water system reliability for utility customers in this area, including all residents in the monastery subdivision. During this closure, detour route signage will be posted guiding traffic to Pleasant Avenue. Portable electric message boards will also be posted one week prior to the closure, notifying the public of the upcoming traffic pattern changes. So I'm sure we're gonna not be happy on some of them residents over there, but it'll be better in the end. And then the other thing, I'd like to make a little announcement that the Fairfield Historical Society, living legend series, has a new location for just the next couple of months because we're expecting a lot of people. So it'll be at the Community Arts Center. And our very own Tim Meyer will be our next speaker. And that's gonna be Tuesday, October the first, 2024, starting at seven o'clock. And Tim, you wanna, well, first of all, I'd like to say you're gonna give some things away. This book is awesome. And so he's gonna have some giveaways. And you don't have to be a member to attend. And I'm gonna turn it over to Tim because he's gonna be our guest speaker and he's gonna give us a little synopsis.
Well, I'm honored, Debbie, first of all, for even thinking that I could provide some good information, but I'll do the best I can. It'll be on General Electric and the impact of General Electric in Fairfield and the area here. You know, I just retired from GE and was the plant manager there for a long time. So I'm gonna give a little bit of a history lesson of how it all came to be because it is completely interconnected with our community here, completely. And it will be for many years to come, as expected. So thanks for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to it.
And we're so excited to have you. It's gonna be a PowerPoint presentation.
Well, I'm gonna, Matt Davidson's been giving me lessons and I'm gonna do well on that, so.
And it's gonna be like, the hundred years is a hundred years.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's gonna be a lot of great information. So you're all welcome, anybody. And like, again, you don't have to be a member to come to the Historical Society. Everybody is welcome.
Thanks, Debbie.
Heard it's a sold-out crowd, you know, standing room only.
There you go.
I'm sure it will be.
Alright, Mr. Paulus, anybody either way?
I, of course, have a couple of quick announcements. The last farmer's market of the season is this Wednesday. The Fairfield Footlighters will perform Blythe Spirit this weekend at the CAC. And on October sixth, there will be a Bengals watch party at Village Green with food trucks. The game starts at one. And I wanna give a shout out to my 1985 fellow graduate, Chris Lutz, out there in the audience who was on the state baseball championship team, right? See, I'm not that old. I can remember that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Alright, no public hearing tonight. Let the minutes, any additions or deletions to the minutes, let them stand as presented. Moving on to old business, Councilmember Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance amending ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinance to Fairfield, Ohio, section 1130.01b2, the city of Fairfield, Ohio zoning map. That's the third reading, so this time I will move to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Second, I have an ordinance to amend sections 1170.03 and 1190.08 of ordinance number 166-84, the codified ordinance to Fairfield, Ohio, to adopt a planning and zoning fee schedule for various types of applications that undergo administrative planning commission, board and zoning appeals, and city council review. And to repeal ordinance number 54-80, that is the second reading, we'll let it stand.
Alright. Public Works, Councilmember Kraft.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the purchase of Road Salt from Morton Salt Incorporated. This will be the third reading, and I'd make a motion for adoption.
Second. Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you, sir. Now we'll move on to new business.
I'd like to make a motion to read all new business by title only.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. And Development Services, Mr. Timmer.
We have five ordinances tonight for Development Services. The first ordinance is to authorize the building superintendent to waive building permit fees to support growth of their company and consolidate operations in one location. CNT Design proposes to expand the Port Union Road building. CNT Design and Equipment has requested project assistance in the form of waiving the building permit fees for the construction of the addition. The building investment is expected to exceed 1.4 million. The second ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute and submit the FY 2025 Community Development Block Grant Application and Agreement. A sidewalk is proposed on the east side of Dixie Highway at two locations between Sims Road and the North Corporation Line. Once completed, the sidewalk sections will complete the missing gaps on the east side of Dixie Highway from north of the corporate line to Nillis Road. The third ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute a restricted fund agreement with the Fairfield Community Foundation to establish the Fairfield Helping Neighbors Fund and authorize a grant amount. A city council 2024 goal was to establish, I'm sorry, to enhance property maintenance enforcement and promote stable resident-owned housing. City staff have researched approaches used in other communities and identified that several peer communities have established home repair programs to directly assist homeowners. The fourth and fifth ordinance tonight will be presented by Greg Kathman. Thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we wanna let Greg present that one or go through it first? I have an ordinance to authorize the building superintendent to waive building permit fees related to the construction of a new facility for CNT Design and Equipment at 4025 Port Union Road and declaring an emergency. I move to suspend the second, third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Next, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute and submit the fiscal year 2025 Community Development Block Grant Application and Agreement with Butler County, Ohio. I move to suspend the second, third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Third, we have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a restricted fund agreement with the Fairfield with the Fairfield Community Foundation to establish the Fairfield Helping Neighbors Fund and authorize a grant in the amount of $60,000 to be made to the fund for the purpose of supporting city residents that cannot physically or financially complete necessary exterior home repairs, declaring an emergency. I move to suspend the second, third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Fourth, we have an ordinance to authorize the city manager. Let him go first.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council. Jamal, yep, there you go. Thank you. Sorry, we have two presentations tonight, so we're gonna have to juggle between the two of them. All right, so I'm here. I have a couple of slides before I introduce the guest speaker, Tyler Bradshaw, who's the Executive Director of the Nuxall Foundation. He's got the exciting part of the presentation. I kinda have the boring technical parts first here. But, so new business items, four and five, on your agenda. Basically, would authorize the city manager to execute amendments to agreements with the Fairfield Youth Athletic Association. That's the group that does the youth football association and the Joe Nuxall Miracle League fields for various sites on Grow Lane. All right, so this is an aerial map of the Grow Lane site in general here. Let me see if I get the little thing to work. There it is. So Grow Lane kinda comes up, and then it makes a 90-degree turn. And if you've all been back there, this is the wastewater treatment facility. So here's the Great Miami River, obviously. The youth football fields, so the parking lot is there, and then the main field is here, and they have some little practice areas over here. And then the Nuxall Miracle League facility is here. So the, we've been having discussions with the Miracle League folks for a couple of years, probably, about their goal to establish what they call the Hope Center on their campus. And as they were kinda looking at it, we had some meetings with them, and, you know, they considered some land up here north of their, the ball fields. At one point, they were trying to squeeze it into this little site here. And they met with a number of city folks, myself and Mr. Sackenheim and Ben Mann and some others. And we said, you know what? Maybe it makes more sense to look at the west side of the ball fields. There's a little more room. We think it can accommodate your plans a little better. We talked to Adam Sackenheim, and he assured us that, you know, that land was purchased for future growth of the wastewater plant, but he assured us there's still enough acreage around. So overall, so we suggested that maybe they pivot, and they did, and it turned into a much better plan, I think, that you'll see tonight. So the other thing that became an issue was, you know, there's a lot of parking out there between the football group that has 211 spaces and the Nuxall facility, Miracle League facility has 133 existing spaces and plans to build about 30 to 40 more. So there's a lot of parking out there. We just had to make sure that both organizations kinda work together. I think they do have a cordial relationship, and they do fine now, but it's always better to put it in writing just so future headaches don't emerge. So we kind of, that's some of the main aspects of these two amendments is to kinda clarify some parking arrangements. So basically, in terms of the Nuxall area lease, we got some professional survey work done. So their lease runs up pretty far north onto their site. Oh, the screen just went blank on me there. So the area that's kinda shaded there is the lease area that we intend to vacate. It's about 1.254 acres on the north side of the ball field, so right there. And that number was, or that measurement was chosen very specifically because what that leaves now by removing that land from the site is now we have a 600 by 600-foot square box, which is the exact size you need to plant a wellhead. So Mr. Sackenheim, that's good news for him and for other water producers in the area. And the Nuxall folks were happy to give that land up that they're not currently using. And in exchange, they're getting almost three and a half acres on the west side to accommodate their, the new Hope Center. So it will fit very well, and I will show you here. So this is a site plan that, they have a design team at SHP who's been working on the design of the building, and Bear Becker Engineering has done some of the civil site work. So they have a rendering, and they plotted it on the site, and so we did a survey. We have the exact measurements of what's needed so that they won't need any easements or any waivers or board of zoning appeals or anything requirements. You can see that they're gonna add a little bit of parking on the east side of the existing parking lot, a little bit of parking in the front, and then the Hope Center structure itself just to the west side of the ball field. So that is done. I'm gonna be finished now because Tyler really has the much more exciting part of the presentation here. If I can bring his presentation up.
Thank you, Greg. Greg gets the architectural drawings, and I get the fancy videos. So I drew the good stick here. I did wanna take a moment to recognize a few of our Nuxall Foundation board members that are here in attendance tonight. Our Vice Chairman Larry Tischler, our Treasurer Chris Lutz, and our longtime board member who's gonna be our campaign chair, I think I told you that, right? Ron Reedy. Ron Reedy's been involved since the start and lucky to have them here with us. But we've been talking about the Hope Center for a while, and we've had to work through multiple iterations of that and finally have settled on a great plan, thanks to the folks at SHP. But I have to say, none of this plan would be a reality if it weren't for Scott Timmer, Greg Kathman, Adam Sackenheim, Steve Walterman, all the people who met with us to try to figure out a way to make this work. And because of their diligence, their commitment and service, we now have a plan that is much better suited to serve the special needs population, not just here in Fairfield, but all throughout Butler County and greater Cincinnati. So I wanna take a moment to show you that design. This is the first time we've actually shown this design to anybody, so you, I'm looking for your approval, and also you're my focus group. So our goal since we started the Miracle League Fields has, we've had this vision to build the world's most comprehensive campus for athletes with physical and developmental disabilities. And we've been able to do that with the baseball and softball fields, with adding bocce ball, playground equipment, mini golf, and other sports. And that facility is great for those six months out of the year when the weather cooperates. But those other six months, where do our families go? Where do our athletes recreate, and where do they build that sense of community? So our plan, our vision, really is to make Fairfield, Ohio the most inclusive destination in the country for athletes with special needs. We truly see this as a destination opportunity because the building and the campus that will exist once the Hope Center is completed, there will be nothing like this in the rest of the world. So Fairfield is already on the map, but it'll put Fairfield on the map for a very different reason. So this video is the fly-through of the building. And as Greg mentioned, this design was created by Jeff Parker and the team at SHP. I'll kinda talk over some of these things. This is on the west side of the facility, so in between the currently existing ball fields and the water treatment facility. What you see in front of you is a 31,000-square-foot indoor recreational facility designed specifically for athletes with special needs and their families. The arena is what we'll be entering to in this part of the video, which will be home to the Butler County Special Olympics. Of course, we'll be able to host basketball games there, but we'll also see new sports come into play, things like power soccer, chair volleyball, floor hockey. We can do large-scale obstacle course setups in here. The stage you see in the back will actually double as a dance studio when it's closed off because the special needs population loves to dance. We can do group fitness instruction, karate. Lots of amazing offerings can take place in that arena. Then the room we enter into is what we're calling our multipurpose room, which is truly a one-of-a-kind, only-in-the-Hope-Center-type-of-experience where our athletes and individuals with disabilities will get to participate in recreational offerings that you won't see anywhere else. Things like a wheelchair trampoline, a wheelchair ball pit, wheelchair zipline. There'll be power stairs, sensory equipment, that digital projection wall that's interactive, projection tables. And in addition to this nearby game room, there'll also be an adjacent therapy suite where outside, medical providers and social service agencies can come in and provide consultations and appointments directly on-site to members of the special needs community. We also see a lot of workforce development opportunities in the concession stand throughout the building. The community room is kinda the third segment of the building, which is what you see here. Of course, it'll be a great spot for classes, seminars, workshops, a rentable space where the entire community can take advantage of the space that we have to offer, an indoor/outdoor patio that will allow some flexibility there. And the exciting part for the Nuxall family, this will be the permanent home to the Nuxall Archives. So all of Joe's memorabilia will be on display throughout this facility, but primarily in this room to tell the story of the man who lived his life here in Fairfield and made a tremendous impact on so many in this city and beyond. We've got some pretty incredible things, from the high-end, like World Series rings, to the low end. Yes, we still have sealed bags of Marty and Joe potato chips. So we finally have a place to put them in the Hope Center, and we just pray that nobody gets hungry in the afternoon and eats them. So that is the fly-through of the Hope Center and the design and the concept as it currently stands. The plan will be after approval to officially launch our capital campaign, which will be called Heading for Hope. This campaign will fund not just the design, the construction, and really raising of the building. This will, this will fund the operations, the staffing, all the things that are gonna happen inside of the building. We have a long-term approach. Larry Tischler's famous for saying, this isn't just gonna be a building where we build it, open the doors, and roll out some basketballs. This is gonna be about providing top-notch experiences to members of the special needs community. So part of this capital campaign will be building in and raising funds that'll help to protect not only the physical landscape of the building, but also what's delivered inside those walls as well. And just to wrap up, our goal has been to give, and I say this on almost every media appearance, our goal has been to give every player with every challenge, every chance to play the game of baseball. And with construction of the Hope Center, we finally get to say it's not just those dreams, but we also get to provide them with every sport, and we get to provide it with every single season. And we're excited to breathe this dream into reality. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the facility, if you have those. But again, on behalf of our foundation, the hundreds and thousands of families we serve, thank you for your support and your partnership in these first 12 years. We're so excited to see where the next decades take us. What kind of timeline, timeline are you, you know, obviously it's capital campaign time. Correct, yeah. So the more, sooner the money comes in, the sooner it can break ground. That's correct. What's your goal? Yeah, it is largely contingent on the fundraising. The good news is, behind the scenes, even before showing off these concepts, the building, we think, is gonna be about $10 million to construct. And behind the scenes, we have already raised 2.5 million just for this project alone. That does not include funds that we have raised to protect the current facility, to deliver on our current programming. That is 2.5 million dollars isolated just for this project. It does depend on how quickly they respond. If it were up to Larry Tischler, we would be taking our shovels from here down to the fields right now and making this happen. But I think that if fundraising goes according to plan, I think you'll hopefully see groundbreaking from us sometime in the spring with about a year to complete construction after that. Spring of '25? Ideally, yes. Yeah. Now, that was contingent. They, Greg told me I could put you down for a million dollars if I came to this meeting, so. It was a matching, his match. Yeah, yeah. And the other thing to keep in mind, too, that $10 million needed to construct the building, that does not all have to be in cash. When we opened the Miracle League Fields, that was about a $3 million facility when it was opened, and about $2 million of that was donated in-kind labor materials and equipment from lots of different organizations all throughout the tri-state. We envision that we're gonna have a similar response to this project. In fact, we've already had many conversations with lots of different construction organizations and companies that wanna be involved in the project. So we don't necessarily have to raise $10 million just in cash. We think there'll be a lot of in-kind contributions as well. Cool. Yeah. Man, gives you chills. It just gives you, every time, I've not seen, of course, this video, and it's just like, wanna be a part of it, so. And when you talk with our families and you hear what an impact this makes on them, we just took a group of about 40 special needs athletes over to Pittsburgh to play a game at Sean Casey's facility. And I try not to get emotional, but when you have families who have been told their entire life that their child's not gonna be able to play any sport and a travel team, a trip to another city, that's, that's just off the table. You're not, you're never gonna have that opportunity to see those families have it, to ride up on a charter bus and be welcomed by thousands of people there in Pittsburgh. We know that in this building, we're gonna be able to create that similar feeling, that similar experience for athletes coming from all across the country for regional, state, national tournaments that we envision are gonna take place in this building. Being able to deliver on that to families that deserve it most, it gives you chills and tears pretty often. Tyler, you know, you know you have the support of everybody up here. Many, all of us, I'm sure, have been there many, many times, myself, my family, whatever. And it is so cool to be there on Fridays and Saturdays. Nowhere, and it's just nothing like it anywhere. Thank you. And you guys and Larry and the gang and Kim just have created a phenomenal venue for Fairfield, but more importantly, really, for the kids that it serves. Thank you. And the families. You're right, sometimes there's some people that have said they've never seen their grandson ever hold a bat or ever, you know, there's a blind, you know. Explain a little bit about that, that, the. Yeah. We've actually had a couple of players with visual impairments. One, Irvin Meadows, pretty interesting story. He actually was no visual impairments and had, he lived down south, had a mosquito bite that ended up, lost vision in one eye, and then a couple of years later, lost vision in the other eye at that point. And Steve Smith, who runs our therapeutic recreation for the Disabled Adult League, and it's just an angel here on earth. He worked with him and a device called a beep ball that actually, if you think of bats and sonar, it's a very similar concept to that, but it's a ball that beeps, and when it releases from the pitcher's hand, the sound changes, and Irvin can actually pick it up and locate the ball based on the sound. And one of my favorite moments every year at the Nuxie Bash, where Mitch and many of you have attended that, was having to quiet down a crowd of about 1,000 people to say, Irvin's coming up to the plate, and we're gonna get the witnesses together. And the noise that erupted after seeing him make contact with the ball is a moment I'll never forget. We have another player that can actually, she just recently started playing a few years ago. She'll put a ball on a tee, and she'll basically touch it and visualize it in her mind where it is, and then she can swing and make contact based on what she's just mapped out with her hands. It's incredible to see it in person, just things that you never thought you'd be able to witness. And we're lucky enough that we get to see them every Friday, every Saturday. It's miraculous. I just had one of our players, actually a father, send me a message on Saturday after the games. And his son woke up that morning, and he's never, he's only ever hit off a tee. And he said, you know what today? I feel like, I feel like not hitting off a tee. And first swing, he crushes one out into left field. And to see the joy on that dad's face, on the family's face, those moments are priceless. And we're just so glad we get to deliver those here in a, in a community that has supported us from the moment we opened. Very good. It's, you know, we make fun of Kim, and he's crying, and you, but we all, we get up there, and you just get these tears in your eyes, and you get chills, and it's just an out-of-body experience that I. Thank you. Love you, love you, and love for, you know, what you guys, and you guys in the back are continuing to do. Thank you so much. Any other comments from council up here? All right. Well, thank you very much, sir. Thank you for allowing me to speak. We appreciate your support. All righty. Now we're back to Councilmember Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys, for that presentation. That was, that was great. And I absolutely loved seeing all that and appreciate everything you guys do. We have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with Fairfield Youth Athletic Association and declaring an emergency. Move to suspend the second, third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Second, motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And lastly, we have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the lease agreement with Joe Nuxall Miracle League Fields Incorporated and declaring an emergency. Move to suspend the second, third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Move to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
That's all I have, sir.
All righty, sir. Thank you. We'll be right behind you. Don't get the TV going. All right, public safety. Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for public safety. The ordinance is to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract for six replacement cardiac monitors. The existing monitors are no longer eligible to be covered under the city's maintenance agreement. The equipment is critical to providing advanced life support. This legislation is a correction to legislation passed at the September 9th meeting of city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, Mr. Paulus.
Yes, I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Striker Medical for six replacement cardiac monitor defibrillators and declaring an emergency. I make a motion to suspend second, third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right. Public Utilities, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for public utilities. The ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with Prodigy Building Solutions for a roof project at the city's wastewater treatment plant. The current roofing system for the treatment plant's filter building and maintenance building are beyond their useful life expectancy and are in need of immediate replacement. The roofing systems to be installed by Prodigy Building Solutions will include a full thirty-year manufacturer warranty by Carlisle-Cyntex Systems. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Pennington.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one ordinance that, to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Prodigy Building Solutions LLC for roof replacement at the city's wastewater treatment plant. I want to make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and finally, finance and budget, Mr. Timmer.
We have five ordinances tonight for finance and budget. The first three ordinances are all related to service delivery updates to the organization. This topic was covered at length during tonight's council manager briefing. The fourth and fifth ordinances are for contractual and non-contractual appropriations. The contractual appropriations total two hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and is for one project in the Public Utilities Department. The non-contractual appropriations total three hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and include twelve projects from the Information Technology Division, Development Services, Parks and Recreation, Fire, and Public Utilities Departments. Thank you.
All righty. For Councilmember Brill, we have Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item is an ordinance establishing salaries for certain exempt and salaried employees of the city of Fairfield and to repeal ordinance number one oh five dash twenty-four and all amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Second is an ordinance to establish salaries and hourly rates for certain salary and hourly employees of the city of Fairfield, Ohio. Authorize and limit the numbers and types of certain employees to repeal ordinance forty dash twenty-four and all amendments thereto and declaring an emergency. Make a motion to suspend the second and third readings.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. The third item is an ordinance adopting and updating service delivery organization chart for the city of Fairfield, Ohio. This time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the second, third readings.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience?
Aye.
Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Um, last, no, it's not the last. Fourth item is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one sixty-six dash twenty-three entitled an ordinance to make estimated appropriations for the expenses and other expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Make a motion to suspend the second and third readings. Thank you.
Somebody was gonna do it. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, motion is, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
And motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
The last item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to amend ordinance number one sixty-six dash twenty-three